Good morning. It's nine o'clock. I'll go ahead and call the supervisory meetings to order. Do I have a floor for today's agenda?
So moved, sorry.
Any further discussion? All in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed, motion carries. Betty, will you read the minutes from the last meeting?
May twentieth, twenty twenty four. Chairman Hogable called the regular meeting of the Wright County Board of Supervisors to order at nine AM. Members present were Foose, Rasmussen, and Helgabold. Motion by Rasmussen, second by Clues to approve the tentative agenda. Motion carries. Minutes of the previous regular meeting of May thirteen, twenty twenty four were read and approved, approved place for payment. Motion by Clues, second by Rasmussen to approve Resolution twenty twenty four dash seventeen to cancel outside outstanding warrants. By roll call vote, ayes, clues, Rasmussen, and Helgabold, nays, none. Resolution twenty twenty four dash seventeen duly passes and reads as follows. And there you can see the full resolution. Motion by Clues, second by Rasmussen to approve Resolution twenty twenty four dash eighteen to accept financial responsibility, maintenance, and operation of trails for trails in Wright County. This is a formality with the Iowa DOT requiring a new resolution that is over one year old. By roll call vote, ayes. Uh, boost, Rasmussen, and Helgabold, nays, none. Resolution twenty twenty four dash eighteen duly passes and reads as follows. And you can see that whole resolution. Adam Clemens, Wright County Engineer, gave an update on the secondary roads. There were twenty-two work orders completed last week. Mowing of the hard surface roads is on schedule for Memorial Day weekend. The blade operators graded a total of four hundred ninety-five point seven five miles last week. Trucks continue to haul for the granular twenty twenty four scheduled rock with twenty-five of ninety segments completed and completed spot loads when weather allowed. Courtney Morris, Drainage Administrator, presented the twenty twenty four drainage districts eligible to be spread per Iowa Code four sixty-eight point five seven for no less than ten, no more than twenty years. The board then reviewed and took action on the following eight eligible districts spreading each of them per the Iowa Code. DD two is ten years, thirty-six lateral two, ten years, JD one hundred dash two, twenty years. DD one oh seven lateral one, fifteen years. DD one twelve, ten, one twenty-three lateral A, ten, one twenty-six, ten, and DD one thirty-two, ten years. Motion by Rasmussen, second by Clues as Drainage District Trustees to approve the twenty twenty four motion, uh, drainage district assessments eligible to be spread. Six, six districts being spread for ten years, each one district being spread for fifteen years, and one district being spread for twenty years each. Motion carries. Clues received a phone call over the weekend from the county farm tenant, Kevin Burris, regarding tile issues at the county farm. Ryan Mazdam with Mazdam Construction completed repairs. The board may consider putting in more tile at the county farm in the future. Uh, motion by Clues, second by Rasmussen to adjourn the meeting. Motion carries.
Any additions or corrections? That they will stand approved is red. Any who've been around, open forum for the public, anybody here or on Zoom address want to address the board?
Yes, I would like to address the board. Uh, you were notified in email I saw as you guys revoked uh, in the addresses concerning a proposed resolution objecting to the Iowa Utility Board's authority to enact eminent domain uh, within Wright County uh, for privately owned or operated carbon dioxide pipelines. And I have, uh, amended that resolution, uh, to for Wright County. I have reviewed it, uh, where it refers to Iowa Code. Um, and so I'm recommending that this be put on the agenda for next week for adoption. I, I did, uh, um, Steve Kinkle had reached out to, he is the supervisor, he's the chairman for Shelby County. He had reached out to Tim Whipple regarding this resolution. Um, and their enactment of it and, uh, uh, and his response was, I have no legal concerns with adopting it. And I think from a policy standpoint, it is important to let the public know uh, what counties think of this use of eminent domain. So.
That'll be on for next week.
Thank you.
Anybody else who'd like to address the board?
Jeff Evans, Community and Family Resources, just want to uh, talk about and review some of the available free trainings for Wright County that we can offer. Um, drug overdose training with Narcan voucher or actually uh, handing out Narcan, uh, primary prevention strategies to address opioid use at the community level. Uh, psychostimulants and the necessary information for the Iowa front lines, stigma associated with substance use disorder and trauma-informed care for first responders. All this, uh, training, uh, we can uh, give, uh, to the Wright County. So just, uh, reach out to us if, uh, interested.
Great, thank you.
And Jeff, you were located in the, uh, in the old Iowa State, uh, Extension Office, is that correct?
Yeah, right now, our, our Clarion office, we actually have, uh, uptown in the old Towes building and, uh, we're in Webster's, we have the Webster City office is where I'm at.
Okay. Okay, very good. Right, so the Towes building in Wright County.
Yep, yes, we do have an office there.
Thank you, thank you, appreciate it.
Yep.
Anybody else? Okay, if that will move forward, uh, review and take action on drainage levies. Courtney? These are the joint ones?
Uh, this is joint and everything. And these are the official copies that I'm going to get signed, and then I'll switch you out with a copy of the even.
Okay.
Okay, might just be easiest since there's a decent amount here, just to kind of start at the top of the pile.
Okay.
Um, the first one I have here is our joint with Humboldt County. They are the control. This is for Drainage District forty-seven dash three. They need to assess eight thousand five hundred eighty-four dollars and seventy cents into the district with a hundred and three dollars and two cents being Claire, her Wright County share.
Okay, and the number of landowners that would be spread over for Wright County?
Uh, the number of landowners is.
We only got a hundred and three dollars, it will be very many, I don't think.
There is seven tracks in Wright County.
So you want a motion on each one of these, Courtney, or you want to do all of them?
We can do all the joint ones at the end.
Okay.
Uh, the next one that's there is with, um, Webster County. It is forty-nine dash ninety. Uh, they need a total of three thousand three hundred and sixty-five dollars and fifty-four cents. Uh, Wright County's share of that would be one thousand one hundred and ninety-nine dollars and thirty cents. And they have notated on there that they are not leaving that in Webster County. The next one you have in front of you is DD one twenty-one dash fifty-four with Hancock County. Uh, we are control of this one. Uh, we need a full of seven thousand eight hundred and five dollars and seventy-four cents with our share being five thousand sixty-six dollars and seventy cents. Uh, the next one is, uh, one twenty-five, forty-nine dash one lateral sixty. This is also a Wright County control. It is a shared district with Hancock and Franklin Counties. We need a total of five hundred and eighty-four dollars and sixteen cents for this fund. And Wright County's share would be three hundred and seventy-eight dollars and seventy-nine cents. The next ones, there's actually three of them here with Franklin County. They are the control of all three of these. The first one is one hundred dash two. Um, they need a toll of two hundred eighty-two thousand nine hundred and seven dollars and forty-eight cents for the district. Wright County's share of that is seventy-six thousand three hundred and eighty-five dollars and two cents. Uh, the next one is.
That was the open, uh, two dash one hundred, that was the open ditch.
That's the one that they're finishing up.
Okay.
Yes. Uh, the next one is one hundred and eleven dash three. They need a total of two thousand nine hundred and ninety-two dollars and twelve cents. Of that, six hundred and twenty-eight dollars and thirty-five cents would be Wright County's share. And then the last one is, uh, DD two-two-eight dash eighty-five, the main. Uh, they need a toll of nine thousand eight hundred and thirty-one dollars and twenty cents. Wright County's share is three thousand nine hundred and thirty-two dollars and forty-eight cents.
Oh, the first one there, is that going to be split or good, that spread out?
That one you guys did choose to spread.
That we did spread, okay.
Um, and is that amount that we would pay, that's in accordance with the contract? You know, we've done a couple of the pay estimates. Are we over budget, under budget from what the contractor bid? You know?
I don't know off the top of my head.
Okay. Um.
I don't believe that they're completely done yet because we haven't heard back from the engineer.
Okay.
The last time we heard when completion was going to be, he has not responded to.
I, I know that the last passment that we did, there was, uh, a remainder, um, that had not been paid to the contractor. I, that would be the only thing that I would request that you get clarification on is that that we are within the bounds of the contract. I will, I would make a motion to approve these.
We got one more. The last one we have is, uh, joint district with Franklin County, uh, DD one fifty-nine dash eight. A toll needed of four thousand two hundred and nine dollars and eighty-nine cents. Uh, with Wright County's share being two thousand six hundred and fifty-eight dollars and thirteen cents.
And Franklin County is the control owner?
We are the control.
We are the control.
Yes.
And we've already acted on all of these, giving the spreads, correct? That we are the control of?
We've acted on the ones that are eligible for spread, yes.
So you just need a motion to approve the, I would make that motion.
Let's start at that.
Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. And you had this last one here, Courtney?
Yep, so that one right in front of you is, um, all of the, the, all of the drainage districts that we're assessing this year, there's forty-one drains. Um, on this sheet, you'll see the amounts for each drain to be levied along with the, uh, number of years eligible for spread if we so chose to, uh, make that spread. Um, before you guys make any motions on that, I do want to point out the additional paperwork that I gave you there. Uh, the next sheet there is a landscape sheet that shows you all of the, um, tracks that are US Fish and Wildlife. Um, they total across all the districts that we will be assessing this year, three hundred and fifty-seven dollars and ninety-one cents. And those amounts have been taken into consideration in the amounts that are being assessed to each of the districts.
So you have spread those to the other landowners?
Yes. Um.
I would prefer that those remain outstanding, so.
I can tell you that, uh, the first one, DD ten and the last one, DD three. Um, those amounts, there is enough extra um, after the warrants that have been paid with the additional add-on that may include to cover that. Um, the one that was actually an amount included is the second to last one, that hundred and forty dollars and three cents. That one had to be added on to be spread across the other landowners.
And again, uh, my thought on that is that I would like those to remain outstanding and and require us to take separate action on those. Uh, I've got a resolution in front of, uh, NACO. The that Deb started on, uh, before I ever became a supervisor, um, but we finally got NACO to support that. And that is, uh, a re- resolution that uh, US Fish and Wildlife or the federal government, I should say, that they pay their share of their uh, drainage assessments rather than spreading those to, uh, the other landowners. That's just uh, that is not right. And I know in the past we have, we have used, um,
Yes, somebody.
LITC.
LITC, I thank you, um, funds in order to pay those. But, but I would like to keep that separate so that we're taking action that could be traced back. Um, and I know that this could be traced. I just I don't like the idea of
If we don't pay.
Their portion that they should be paying be put on the backs of the people who
Right.
Who pay theirs.
Right.
So if we don't pay them, they just go on collected then, or how does that work with the treasurer at that point?
Yeah, that fund will continue to stay in the negative and we will not be able to reassess for that amount to them. And those charges have already been assessed to the districts.
But the assessment goes out to the US Fish and Wildlife. Typically, we receive a letter from them saying, uh, hey, we're not going to pay this. Uh, federal law says right now that we don't have to pay it.
Yeah.
But their argument is is that the federal government doesn't pay taxes. My argument is, is this is not a tax. This is, uh,
A work order.
Well, it's a levy on uh, something that you should understand when you accept the property, whether it's given to you or whether you purchase it. It is your responsibility to pay for the repairs on that communally owned infrastructure.
It's not a tax and it's not a special assessment.
Right.
Although lately their argument has been that, um, we are in the wrong for sending them these and they will take legal action if we continue.
I guess until the, well, until the law changes, are we obligated to approve it? Because we still have to stay within the law.
Well, what if I don't want to pay mine?
I mean, then it's going to go in tax sale.
Yeah, and, and my argument is why isn't theirs going on tax sale?
Uh, because Peggy can't advertise it.
Eric, you had some input.
While I agree with your statement, Dean, that the other landowner should not be paying, everybody in the Fish and Wildlife Service district outlet starts on the Fish and Wildlife Service ground. It's no different than the white box going down almost to Larry Anderson's and then changing to a non-district. You can simple, simplify this solution. Eighty-two percent of that ground in the district you're talking about is owned by the Conservation Board, Fish and Wildlife Service, or the Department of Natural Resources. You can take that land out of that district because there is no tile in there anymore. It all goes into wetlands.
Right.
And fix that. Yes.
A- and I guess, um, my concern would be that it would not be that the wetland may not be adequate outlet for the, for the way that the tile was designed to work.
I would suggest you come out and look at them.
Correct.
Because when this whole project was developed, the supervisors worked with the Fish and Wildlife Service and the DNR to put a control structure, concrete dam on the outlet to hold the water.
Correct.
So I just want to be on record again.
Yeah. And, and my beef is not with the DNR pays their, uh, drainage assessments on the ground that they own. The Conservation Board pays their assessments on the ground that they own. Um, my beef is with US Fish and Wildlife.
But under, but, but I understand your situ, that what you and I agree with you, but as trustees, we have to go by the, what the law states at this time and by not I mean, and what if we don't pay it, where's, where's the dollars going to come from? It just stays in negative balance?
Yeah. It's going to stay as a negative. Yeah, you'll, you have to abate it later if they don't pay it.
And then, and then assess the district again.
Assess it just again.
Okay.
So if the US Fish and Wildlife or the federal government comes in and they, um, have a huge washout or a, a, a solid or they, they have come in and requested a work order before.
On the, on the district upstream, yes.
And they, on, on their property, on their property. And, um, and so then if we go up, we fix that, who pays for that?
I believe that the last one was the DNR fixed it because they're the managers of the land.
Mm-hmm.
But the one district that I'm talking about, eighty-two percent of it is owned by, like I said, and it actually splits into two outlets. The biggest outlet.
Which drainage district are you, ten?
I believe you're talking about ten.
Northern Pikes Timber.
Ten, I believe so.
Yeah. There's actually two outlets on that.
And that's a huge district.
You could keep the one outlet.
Mm-hmm.
And vastly reduce the amount of acres that gets assessed that Dean is upset about all the time. But I, I just, I just want to be on the record as the, again.
Uh, I'm willing to come out and look and I would like to have it explained to me. Uh, my concern is that it doesn't impact somebody upstream that they have adequate outlet.
They have, they all have adequate outlets.
Correct. Uh, I will come out and I'd like to see that.
I can tell you DD ten has two hundred and ninety-six tracks in it. Um, but again, this is one that there's going to be enough in there. With the add-on to cover it, I did not have to include their dollars and add it in in addition to um, the number three, the last one, there's eight hundred and thirty-one tracks in that district. And again, I did not have to add that one on. There's going to be enough after uh, with the add-ons. And eighty-five, which is the one that I did have to include as an add-on, there is twenty-two tracks in that district.
And that's for the hundred and
Forty dollars.
Forty dollars, yes.
Yes.
So essentially the landowners will either get assessed now.
Or later.
Or, and if they don't pay, we abate the US Fish and Wildlife.
And then we.
And, and then it's in a negative, and so then we have to assess it again. So, and it's not, she's not saying she's, she still will send these people, the US, the statement. They're still going to get their statement.
So another thing just to kind of keep in consideration, um, the outstanding warrants for eighty-five, since this is the one that I had to add that hundred and forty dollars on to what was originally going to be assessed. I'm not going to worry about that one at the moment. The total outstanding warrant on this one was one thousand one hundred and one dollars and thirty-seven cents. I did a warrant add-on of six hundred and forty dollars and three cents, which includes that hundred and forty. So if you take the hundred and forty off, I did a five hundred dollar add-on. If we continue to leave it as is and we send out the assessments, if for whatever reason, US Fish and Wildlife, we get lucky and they actually do pay, then that hundred and forty dollars that was additionally assessed will be in addition to the five hundred dollar warrant add-on. If they don't pay it and we do decide to use that additional money that was assessed as part of the add-on could be used to pay that. Otherwise, if it's not, then it just sits in the fund as an add-on. So.
It doesn't go anywhere. It stays there for future repairs.
I understand what you're saying.
So you'd be looking at our original five hundred dollar warrant add-on to have our cushion in our account to a hundred and sixty dollar and three cent add-on.
And when you've done that in the past, have they paid that?
Yeah.
They have.
Yeah.
No, US.
Not the, not.
Not US Fish and Wildlife. All the landowners haven't paid it.
Right.
US Fish and Wildlife have not paid since I've been here.
Right.
But this is just like we've done last year and the year before where we've taken US Fish and Wildlife's amounts and whether it be culture or not, I guess that's not the word I want, but right to add that on to the rest of the landowners.
When we abate it, that's what happens.
Right.
Is what you're saying.
But if we end up abating it, then that money still stays in there going towards future repairs and things. So it would be just like if we were doing a warrant add-on.
Good. I just feel like I'm beating my head against the wall and and I'm using my own hand to do it. I mean, by.
Well, I think you're trying to get the law changed. It's sometimes it takes a slow process, but you know, we're working at it. But until it changes, we're kind of stuck between a rock and a hard place.
Right. Including it as the numbers are right now, though, will avoid having to go back and reassess later.
Correct.
Because we will not be able to reassess for these same charges. We would have to include that amount in in addition to for like our add-on or something, which avoid doing that later on. We're just going to do it now.
Understood.
But then you guys can make the decision later on if we're going to want that collected, if we use it to pay that or if you end up abating it. But at least this way, the district will have enough money in the fund to cover all the warrants and claims that have already been paid.
And could we achieve the same objective by taking, uh, do we have LITC funds still remaining? We've spent all of that.
Well, yeah.
Okay.
You used it on your dollars and cream.
Yeah, and do we have, uh, uh, do we have a portion of ARPA money that is undesignedated?
I wouldn't use ARPA money because it's drainage districts. It's two different things.
Correct. All right, well, I've, you've heard mine. I won't belabor the point.
And I totally agree with you, Dean. I, it, it, it's I just don't see any way out of it. I mean, we're almost obligated to, to, to
To pay it.
To pay it. But you know, I, I think the, the fight you're battling is well worth it and I, I, I hope we can get some ground on it.
But, and I can see that what you're trying to do is we will end up having to do that process more than likely until the laws change. I, I do understand.
And it's a small enough amount in addition to what is already being added on as a warrant add-on. I don't feel that it's as much of a burden.
Right.
Um.
It's principle. I mean.
It is principle, yeah.
It's principle to get the fund up to where it needs to be so that we can cover all the warrants that are out there. And then the decision can be made later on if it's going to be abated, if it's going to be that amount used. And then if the decision is to use that amount, then.
Those dollars.
Those.
Would be used for the other.
Say in it and object or whatever they can. Okay, the next one that you're looking at looks very similar to the spreadsheet that I sent, gave you guys last week for the eligible spreads. Um, just bringing this one to you guys' attention so you can see the number of years that, um, you chose to spread each of the drains. There is one that has been removed off of here, which is DD thirty-six lateral two. And that is because, um, between last week and today, I've gone through all the districts to double check numbers and make sure there wasn't any more inhaled parcels and things. And there was a typo with an additional number that was inadvertently entered, um, for DD thirty-six lateral two. And that parcel once corrected was then, um, lower than the five hundred dollars. So that district is no longer eligible, uh, to be spread as all tracks are under five hundred.
Uh, I was, on this sheet, I'm showing DD thirty-six lateral two at seven hundred. Is that?
What sheet?
This sheet going here.
No, not that. You, you want to look at this one.
Still that one.
This is right, this is right.
If you look at last week's sheet and then compare it to this week, lateral thirty-six dash two is no longer on there.
Yeah, that track that was previously on there was over a thousand dollars.
Okay.
That was going to be eligible to respread. Once the typo was fixed, they are now under five hundred.
Okay.
So just bringing that to your attention that that district has been renewed from this sheet. Um, the next sheet that you have there that has the blue highlight across the top, this is just to kind of show you guys that this is what our administrative fund is going to look like. This is that five dollars per track that we collect on each, um, particle or each, um, looks like tracks that was assessed. This is that, uh, five dollars that the treasurer's office can collect and, uh, that toll is forty-six thousand seven hundred and seventy-five dollars. And then the sheet right behind that without the blue heading that kind of looks similar is the, um, administrative fees that we collect, which is that three percent. Um, it's off the, it was, it's up to the districts. And that amount tolls eight thousand. And that amount totals eight thousand, seven hundred and thirty-three dollars and twenty-five cents. Uh, those amounts are what go into our um, drainage admin funds that help pay for my salary. Um, Dave Johnson for uh, legal attorneys when it's not specific to a district, uh, different things like that.
So this is essentially income and this is essentially an administrative expense.
Not an expense, it's an income as well.
And I think we paid, did we use the drainage admin fund to do the resolution for the drainage districts for the, the uh, utilities?
For Dave Johnson for the pipeline, all that work that we did.
Yes, so that, that is what these dollars are used for.
So that is all the information that I had before you guys acted on the sheet for all of the drainage districts here. I wanted to share with you.
Good, laid out well. So you need a motion to approve the joint districts?
Uh, we already did the joint districts, this is just all the, the remaining districts.
Motion to approve the remaining districts.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries. Thank you, Courtney. Hey, Adam, you're up next.
So last week, the guys were out uh, playing, we did have quite a bit of rain and storms, so um, didn't get as many uh, miles graded. Uh, as we like, three hundred and fifty, um, had to close some roads, I think we had seven or eight locations. Uh, that we had to go out and actually close, uh, I think four out of. Four out, four or five out of the eight actually had signs up, so.
Any damage?
I don't think so, you know, kind of just up and down on us.
Yeah.
Um, we were talking, I think I had Nate out. Uh, he had, had to move something on Friday. Yeah, well, not that one, that, that one got rotten, uh, we didn't have a, Carl let me know of a tree that. Got stuck on two hundred and fiftieth. On the boom, it was so big that there was a limb that came up and over.
Onto the road.
Onto the road.
So you could actually at nighttime, you would hit the limb.
You would hit the limb, so, yeah, so we had a couple guys go off of that, so there's, there's been some OTs we, that. Uh, or last week that we had, um, they are also reclaiming the hard service on the shoulders west of Madison, North Highway Three still. Um, trucks, all the drainage program, also all spot rocks when, when they could and they finished up mowing. Um, the entire county uh, with um, hay grouts before we wore them there, so. Um, engineer miles are done, twenty twenty-four rock is at thirty-six percent, thirty-three out of ninety. Um, it's completed, so hopefully we get some decent weather so we can start, keep going on that, um. Like to get that done and move on to the next process there, uh, work orders thirteen, uh, we did have some uh, dust control permits that we've uh, put in there. Um, and then the mowing, like I said, was a hundred percent complete.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Any old business, new business, new businesses are updated on meetings, gentlemen?
I had uh. Central I would, you will detention. Friday.
That's right.
And then I also had uh, or I'm gonna have, tonight I gotta be up at Amisburg for our annual meeting. For UDMO. I'll be gone later in the afternoon. Back this evening sometime.
Be president of that this section?
I will be tonight.
I had uh, Midas. Uh, board meeting on Wednesday. Um. Significant stuff that we did there, I guess, was uh, approved and amended uh. Did, I guess, how, what would you say for the building, you know, for improvements on the building? Um, to go out for bids.
Yes.
Um, and then uh.
What kind of building?
The repairs to the existing building at Midas. And. Anything else?
The, the board did approve a special uh, award uh, to their employees.
Yeah. Uh, essentially a bonus, um, there was discussion about uh. Um, whether a bonus gets the job done for retention or if um, changing the. The wages is better for that and, and there's a committee on the executive board that is working to. Um, that's what they're looking into, is changing the, the pay scale rather than bonuses, so.
And I serve on that board.
Yes.
And also on uh, central attention, they are lowering our bed day rate to, it's going to be down twenty dollars more it was.
Oh wow. It doesn't happen very often.
No.
They're lowering, well.
Mr. Chairman, can I add one more thing?
Yes.
Uh, we did pour the deck uh, last week down on the Woolstocks uh, City Bridge. Um, so that is completed, the guys uh, are testing um, a couple beams this morning to see if we can release the forms. Uh, it doesn't look like we're going to be able to do it just yet, we're going to probably wait till our five and seven day break. Um, so, and then also a big uh, shout out to um, Hancock County Engineers Office, they donated a couple guys from the Engineers Office to come out. And uh, we have that continued support between the two of us, when we have big, big bridge deck pours that, they'll come out and help us with testing. So when we do our air and slump, um, we'll go up there, they'll come down here, so, so continuing that relationship a little bit there.
Good photos on Facebook.
Yeah, yep, the drone, uh, we sent up the drone a couple times and uh, got that done, so. Uh, yeah, so hopefully uh, in the next month it should be open.
Uh, I may be calling you, um, if we get the weather where they can do some tile work on the county farm. I was thinking it'd be nice to have, uh, when they're done with the work. Uh. Along with GPS coordinates and stuff, it'd be nice to have a, a drone view of places that they put tile in.
Great, sure, that's a good idea. Thank you.
Thank you, I think after our work session at the uh, professional meeting last, we went over to, we stopped at Jim's houses and the new bank building to see that. Transformation was unbelievable, you know, from uh, you know, what he's done to, definitely a huge asset for Blair.
Definitely.
So. Anything else, gentlemen, not all of the things, a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries, we're adjourned, thank you.